It's so serious.
No jinxing.
A little bit of, little bit of.
Go ahead, sorry. So, let's go ahead and start our communications committee meeting. It is Thursday, September 7th, 1:00 P.M. And if we could just start actually with MJ, everybody introduce themselves would be awesome.
Yeah, good afternoon, I'm MJ with the Communications for the Crystal District.
Hi, I'm Toni Riley. I'm the Senior Director with Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Community Engagement.
You're right, super good.
Happy now for Director of Ad and Partners?
Oh, sorry, yes, yes. Margaret Bellamy to the board.
Amanda Fossard, Assistant to the Board.
Kelly LeSens, Board Member.
Dora Wilson, Board Member. And is there anybody online, Amanda?
Um, yes, sorry, I believe Carl. Yes, Carlos.
Introduce yourself, Carl.
So Carl Jacobs member is online. Couldn't respond quickly. So let's just go ahead and start running our agenda. Hi! Go ahead and introduce yourself as well.
Of course.
Awesome, thanks for coming, Cory. And yes, for Jacobs, that's her online. Awesome, wonderful. So first on the agenda is Mr. MJ Kim.
I am currently focusing on our laptop, so.
Okay, let's skip ahead then to Toni, if you can.
Yes.
On the Out of Darkness Walk.
Yes, so this Saturday, our Mental Health and Student Supports Team has the Out of Darkness Walk that starts, registration starts at 10:30. We have a team that is walking to support suicide prevention. So we have an ASP team that is walking, but any support is much appreciated. It is Saturday and registration and the walk will begin at West High School.
So the walk is at West High School? Tell me again what kind of starts registration?
10:30 and then the walk starts at 12:30.
Okay, and so people can still register?
Yes, it's still signed up to be the ASP team like on the day. We'll have a table there and a tent and everything.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Appreciate that.
Question.
Yes, of course.
What organization is behind it? Like where does the registration funding go towards?
So ASD has, it goes towards the national, like Out of Darkness Suicide Prevention.
So Out of Darkness is an organization?
Yeah.
Do you have anything else you wanted to add about community engagement right now?
That is all. I'm working with MJ's team still. I'm developing a better way to promote where we're going to be at using our website, probably the calendar on the front, but hopefully more ideas to, or more information.
Okay, awesome, thank you. So and next on the agenda, move ahead to Board Engagement Calendar.
Oh. You should have a two-page document in front of you. So since 2021, we have kind of tracked ourselves, reminding ourselves of had a plan for how we move through all the work, the work we want to do within the community. And so what I've done is just gone through and kind of updated. It's really more of a plan than a calendar. But as you will see, the first column just gives a month end or quarter. The second column covers those things that are required of us by policy. The middle column, which is the third one, going to your right, actually gets the community and special reports that we will be inviting people to have before us at our meetings. And then the Joint Assembly meeting is always a big deal. We always make room and plan for that. And then under other, those are the other things that we know that are in our cover that we need to give attention to, particularly through this committee. And also throughout with my work with the Superintendent and staff in our planning. So I want to really just focus on the middle column, the community and special reports. Right now, we hear consistently from our students and from our military. In 2021, we, and I checked the, I've gotten approval of their superintendent because these are not our advisory committees, these are his. But he has approved us working with Kathy and I will work together to design a template for these, for the advisory committees. And you can see them there, they won't report every single month. They will report at least once a quarter. And they will report on our goals and our guardrails, their work and focus on our goals and our guardrails. And so we don't have the template available today, but we will have that available in the future. That is to, that will create a two-way communication between the board and the MEAC. And I understand that there's some changes going to be made with MEAC in the future, and that will be exciting to hear. So we will continue with our military report. We will continue with our student advisory boards. We will also continue with our ELL families, our native advisory committee. And then rotate those in and out, our special ed advisory committee. And actually, under that's part of our agenda, and I'm not, you know, I mean, that's where we would add, like that's where we added the specialist that gave us the sleep analysis. That's where we would, we use that to add very timely or emergent information that we get from our community and from constituents within our community. So this is, is as part of our outreach and our engagement with the community. So that's what's before you. I can answer specific questions. If you look at under other, it's things like, you know, we're going to be redoing, not redoing, but revising our board, we're going to be working on our go, go board, goals and guardrails, blah, blah, blah. And then we, you know, we have things that have been planned, like our Fall Gratitude, which is a meal for, with the staff. We have to work on our legislative priorities. We're going to have a legislative luncheon, those things that are going to take all the oxygen out of the room. Will continue to be the budget and the CIP and anything else we might need to add. So the attempt is that we will look at this each month, add to it, refine it, use it as a guide. It's like we've already approved the board engagement, that the board, the board will have an engagement plan. And it's this committee that will monitor the relevance or of the plan and the content of it, if that makes sense.
Thank you, this is really helpful, getting that 30,000-foot perspective and just sort of understanding what happened, what's happening when. I don't know if this is a question or a suggestion or just a remark. Before Dr. Bryant joined us, we involved Leadership Anchorage in the Superintendent search process.
Yes, we did.
It was a really unique partnership. And I am just wondering if there is any way to invite that cohort, and there's a new cohort each year, in helping with whatever ongoing communications, I mean, I think that the newest cohort was just named. And I'm thinking specifically about, you know, the question of attendance and chronic absenteeism. And that's really not here on this paper.
Right.
But there possibly a group to invite, like if we were to.
So we would have.
Offer them an opportunity to work on a project and then present to us.
So you offer an excellent opportunity. And the way it works is, I think, they, I went to them to pitch, I mean, they had like 30 and 40 people in the community coming to them to pitch a project. And then those members who are a part of that project get to design the project, to work with us, you know, to design the project, right? And so if there's still time for us to present a project to Leadership Anchorage, they would also have to accept it.
Sure, okay.
All right? Yeah, and they only do like, I think the year I pitched the Superintendent Search, they had like 30 people who were applying. And we were one of eight.
Okay, projects.
Projects.
So that was, it just, it stood out in my mind as a unique presentation to the board. It was timely and specific.
So I can look at that, we can need to look at the timeline to see if there is time for us to pitch.
Okay.
A project to be.
And then kind of related to that, another, I see the natives advisory committee and MEAC, and I don't really know how it's getting reconfigured. We also, a year ago, had members of the Asian Pacific Islander community.
That's ELL, that's ELL.
That's, that was just ELL? I thought it was specific to.
That's who they brought forward that time.
Okay.
And again, remember, we had not given them any guidance.
Okay.
So.
But it was, they were keen to know what the board's priorities were so that they could support the board work. And so just continuing, I guess I, I see value in continuing to build that relationship.
Right, so when we looking at our ELL families, they have a calendar. I go through, I go to those meetings. They meet monthly, and it's Zoom meeting, it's open to every board member. They have one for Hispanics, one for Pacific Islanders, they have one for, I think there's four or six of them, I have to look at the schedule. And so, but, so the ELL department coordinates all of that and.
But they came to us through the ELL.
They came, they came through us through ELL. Yeah, and at that time, I think it was specific, Asian Pacific Islander month, there was a reason they came at that time. It wasn't, it wasn't just, it wasn't just.
I remember it followed the incident at West.
There was, yeah, yeah. But I don't think that's why we invited them, though. We invite, they were already on the agenda for like the month, whatever that, I think it was December, November, December. I don't think I rotated any of them, but we can work with the ELL families.
Thinking about absenteeism, there are a couple of groups within, community groups that I think that they would be a really great resource to use to reinforce the importance of attendance.
Excellent, excellent.
So it's really not either.
I absolutely agree. And I, and I think, you know, if we want to add something relative to, you know, that could be one of the things we want reporting back.
That could be something on the template that we could add about attendance.
About attendance. And how, you know, what that looks like.
So each group.
So each group could give us that.
I do like that much.
Yeah.
So that helps the community and the community leaders.
Right, if we can use our community leaders.
Yeah.
To build some traction in that area, I think that would be.
Oh, I absolutely agree.
Build relationships or partnerships.
Absolutely.
I love all the student engagement and all the engagement with different communities. I'm wondering if there's space to have some type of engagement with your staff? Because right now, I think that we haven't talked about it really. I haven't heard much about it, but staffing is still a huge issue across the district. Staff are leaving and drove still, and you guys need to hear from that in a way that addresses them, listens to them, and addresses them because we need them to stay.
Okay, thank you for that. From our, from, yeah, and I, I think I, I can see that, but I also don't want this to become. Yeah, so I guess I would have to think about, that goes outside of the parameters of the plan. Because it really is to focus on the community, and I'm not saying we don't need an audience for our staff. I just don't know that this is the appropriate venue for staff to come before the school board in a regular meeting to have that. Now, if we, if we can call a special meeting where we can set time aside to just hear from staff, no matter, I mean, that, that's possible. You know, I can, I can, I can see that that would be useful. So, and I would want to hear from the administration on how to navigate that. Because it, it, I don't want it to become a.
I don't appreciate.
I mean, I don't want it to become an issue that, that kind of takes on a life of its own. But I do think that's what we forgot, and I would certainly be willing to work on some opportunity where we could have voice from all of our staff at least once a semester. I don't think we would do more than a quarter, but maybe once a semester. Your thoughts, or do we want to kind of think about it?
I think we would need to think about how to do that in a way that fulfills what this is trying to do. This is really trying to look at our cultural groups through the lens of our goals and guardrails so that our strategies really incorporate those particular voices that we don't hear in a formal way, aside from the superintendent engages with the group. So I was viewing it from the lens of this is how we'll achieve our goals and guardrails via the voices of our specific communities that you identify.
And that's the thought behind this particular process, but in light of Cory's suggestion, I would be willing to look at a different process to, for us to talk about what that might look like, member lessons.
I go back to the backdrop of the Superintendent Search, there were lots of surveys that went out to different speaker holders, right? And so, I mean, there's a million surveys in the world, but if there was a regular way to use something like that as a dipstick, a checkup.
Yeah, yeah.
That would aggregate.
How often do you guys do surveys, internal surveys? And then, because I know you do share that with us. And then, and I could see that under our reports at school board, we would have a report maybe on whatever survey you've done, so that we could have a back and forth. The whole idea also is to have a two-way conversation that, that's focused on something, right? So if it is, happens to be a survey on whatever your, whatever ABA wants it to be on, then you want to come and enlighten us on that, then we could make room to look at the results and ask questions.
I, I love the idea of you just going back and thinking about different ideas and how to engage your staff.
Okay.
And not just educate, educate with all the support staff as well.
Okay.
I have found, I just share, I have found testimony to get up in front of you all, that giving testimony is not very effective. Not that you're not listening, but it's not dialogue, it's not engaging, there's no question or answer, so I don't find that a very effective means of using my voice. But I would absolutely think that Totem, APA, ACE, and the others should also be, it should also be included.
Okay, so let's think about that.
Yeah, I don't know that a board meeting is the right space for it.
Right.
But a board, a board together.
Yes, meeting.
Would be, so.
Yeah, and I think, I would like to think about that, absolutely. Oh, I'm not. But you're having a good time with this, so I was like.
Just one other comment about the, since this is the draft plan.
Yeah.
I think it would be important to add school site visits.
Oh, I do, yes.
You know, I, there's such a focus on community councils and advisory boards.
Thank you, Kelly.
And.
I will add that.
I'll be frank, I have my doubts about the utility of that. That's just me, because there's like 12 people in a community council meeting and doesn't always feel like a great use of my time.
Yeah.
But I would rather spend that hour or hour and a half that I'm waiting for my turn to speak in a school.
Yeah.
So I have a little, it's a little bit pushed back against the community councils. They can be incredibly useful for back and forth dialogue. But I find that school site visits are.
They can also be incredibly.
Toxic.
Toxic.
So anyways, I would like to see school site visits emphasized on the Board Engagement Plan because we learn so much by visiting our schools. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, guys.
I love visiting our different departments.
Yeah.
Right, I think it's all of the site, ASD site visits maybe is.
All right, well, that's good, good input. This doesn't need to, this is a committee document, so it doesn't need to go anywhere.
I just have one question. So the, the, like the MEAC and Native Advisory Council, the ELL reports to the board, is that in a particular meeting within that month?
Like, yeah, it should be, I think we talked about, we talked about, it'll be the first or the second meeting, but usually it's the first because we don't want to, it'd be the first or the second.
I didn't know.
Yeah, I think we did the second meeting last time, but it was all, that was the same time that we did our monitoring reports. So they would go before the monitoring report.
And, Madam President, remind me, you might have shared this ELL families, is that referring to a specific organization?
It's a department, the ELL department.
The ELL department sharing strategies on goals and criteria.
Correct.
So it would almost be like, okay, but it'd be different from a work session because it would be a shorter report?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And it'll be more helpful when we come up with the template that we want people to use. And in the, you know, so I'm, the idea is to have a 10, not 10, but a 15 to 20-minute report, and then some question, Q and A, back and forth from board members to whoever is in front of us. As I recall, as we recall, the Pacific Islander group had like eight people. We did, we did go through and listen to everything, but we did not give them any boundaries or guardrails. And I think the guardrails are going to be important so that we can have an effective dialogue.
And I only ask because the way I envision using this is to work with Toni and other staff members to proactively meet with these groups, to have structured conversations around the goals and the guardrails, get their feedback, and kind of present almost like a shared product, so they don't feel like they're on their own to think through all of the administrative details.
Oh, absolutely, they would, yeah, that support would be appreciated. And so it would probably, so it probably should say here, ELL department? Or, because I don't think we have an ELL advisory group. We do have an ELL department.
So we can backwards plan and figure out how your family voices get used.
And so my thought really goes back to the meetings that, the ELL family meetings that we have monthly with our families.
Great conversation, though.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Any other questions, comments about the Board Engagement Plan?
Carl, anything? Oh, wait, let me see. Oh, I can't see.
Yeah, so we'll move on to next item on the agenda, Legislative Priorities Development, and I will pivot back to you again.
Oh, that is just for a reminder, it probably should be on the agenda every time.
Okay.
And we need to strategize on how we're going to come up with our priorities. We had the three Bs last year. That, once we have our priorities, we roll them out with our legislative luncheon. And so we need to probably be planning that, December is around the corner.
I already have the date.
Oh, you have the date?
Yeah, it's December 8th.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's the best date.
KCC?
For King Tech, yep.
King Tech?
Yep.
So remind me, with the Legislative Priorities Development, didn't we do an extra session specifically to work on that for board members? Or was it with?
So what, the way we've done it in the past is we've asked board members to send in their priorities. I think we already know what the priority is going to be. We're going to call them something different this year, but it's still going to be the three Bs. I think some, some manifestation of the three Bs. It's always easier, it just hasn't been so much easier, and, you know, member lessons can chime in. When you, when we go to Juno and talking to legislators, it's really good to just give them the quick and dirty, you know, this is, these are our priorities. You need information on them, we can get the information for you. You know, so the quicker we have those, the quicker MJ can work his magic to make sure we have, you know, we can show, show our, our priorities in different ways, including letting legislators know who their schools are, who they represent. A lot of them don't even know that very important point, not because they, they don't, they don't want to know, they just don't know, you know, what schools am I, you know, in charge of? And then getting, getting together our packets for Juno. So between now and, I think we should probably ask board members to, to think about what their priorities, what, what priorities are important for them. And literally, we just kind of get at the board over there and we just see where we are with, with the priorities. But I think we're at a time, by the time we complete ours, I think AASB would have probably completed theirs, or at least be in the process. We did ours first last time, everybody else was in line, in alignment with us. So I'm hoping, according to our plan, we should have our final legislative priorities in November. Now, we meet early in November, but that's not saying we, you know, we should have some indication or clarity around what those priorities are. So we, and we collect that information from, and I'd be happy to send out a, you know, a reminder to board members to, just to, you know, we're planning our legislative priorities. If you have any that are near and dear to you, please give them to us. And then we take all of that and put it in buckets, like we did with the three Bs. And so think of another little catchy something for this year. Because people did remember the three Bs. They did. Reflections, member lessons?
Well, I'm thinking about, it's great to have the core, you know, core priorities, but I think that's harder for, I think there's value in individual legislators understanding the state of their schools. The state of their community at like really on my, kind of getting back to that report card.
Yeah.
Item from governance. I don't know if there is a way, as we go through our legislative, prepare for the legislative luncheon, to say, okay, legislator A, legislator B, enrollment.
These are your schools.
These are your schools. This is what enrollment is looking like. This is what, you know, our students with special needs are looking, I mean, just whatever like the key metric, this is what your class sizes look like right now. This is what your class sizes might look like next year. I really think there would be value in not just saying we need a base for outpatient and busing and teachers bonded, but in support of teacher, you know, recruitment and retention, but, but have them to understand at a granular level.
And we want to, we want to.
I know, and this is, this is like me throwing data, or you like to say data dirks, but, but they don't, like, if they don't, if they're not coming into the schools, you know, and if they don't understand what's happening in the ground, I mean, they need to know that there are 30-something bodies in, you know, a student classroom in their school. And that with an $80 million deficit next year, I mean, what are we going to have, like 42 second graders in a classroom? I mean, that's ridiculous, but they need to know how ridiculous that's going to be.
So, and I don't agree with the messaging, I just don't know how we would, I want us to, so I would have to think about, and I don't know, because we're not doing those, we're not going to be doing the, the, it's not up to, MJ, you would have to help us.
And I don't know how you would navigate that.
So, because, you know, we have like fun facts, we have fast facts, and now we want to have another kind of fact, a reality check. That's what, that really is what it is. And then what does that look, what is, you know, what is the time involved?
Right, and it's too big of an ask, but.
Yeah.
I just, I feel like they need to know.
Because we have something at the luncheon, oh, we just showed them their schools.
Yeah, it's a, a lot of them overlap, a lot of them have a plethora of schools.
Sure, sure.
And they overlap, and we just took that as a welcoming thing where they, they just send pictures and they can see.
They've been welcomed.
See where they're, I meant as they want. See, we're there, I meant as they walk in, not as.
I'd like to offer like the crystal ball reality check. Like this is what's going to happen next year if something doesn't happen.
Yeah, and I don't know, I don't, I don't. Carl, member Jacobs?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, um, so. Two thoughts on some of the conversation, which I really appreciate. The first regarding legislative priorities. I don't know if I like this idea for every legislative session, but I feel like this legislative session, this particular idea. Makes a lot of sense. I don't know that we wanna change our legislative priorities, both because of the state that. The legislature left their work kind of for the interim. But also because the legislature takes things in two halves that span two academic years. And it's the same group of folks kind of continuing priorities from one session to the other. I think there's some opportunity for synergy there, if we don't change our messaging every year. And we come back and say, we're talking about the same stuff we talked about last time, you folks are ready to get to work. So I, I think that's kind of where I would tend to go on it, um, to avoid, I mean. We can come up with catchy acronyms if we want, but the three Bs I think work great. The needs largely haven't changed, and if we wanna mix, you know, uh more a couple timely modifications, I'm all for that, but. Yeah, I think we don't need to reinvent the wheel, I guess, so that's my thought there is, I hope we give strong consideration to keeping things status quo, especially given. How close um a BSA increase came towards the last few days in session. The other um thought I had, and I'll be honest in saying this is something that I, it's an idea that I don't have to have any firsthand role in. Um, so I'm sorry, MJ, but I've noticed that our communications team has been doing some amazing work on social media. Really providing the community uh a mind's eye into what's going on in our schools. But you can find out like right on Facebook. We have, I think, seven senate districts in the, that's, that are covered by um ASD. If we gave like seven, two to five minute video briefings. For the senate and house members, um, of kind of the lay of the land, the schools that are in that senate district. You know, challenges associated with the things that are going well, I mean, the content could be, you know, up for discussion and further debate, but. Um, I think that those stories that are going out right now are super powerful, and if we use that medium. Um, for legislators who either couldn't or didn't wanna take the time to see schools in their district. I'm assume, I'm hopeful that they would make time for a five minute video. So I think that's an idea, I'm throwing that out there on the dartboard, thank you.
Thank you. I, I was just gonna say that. How we approach legislators is, is based on each of our style too, right? So, so Kelly, your style is very driven, which kind of overwhelms me a little bit. Although the data is extremely necessary, and my pitch is more of the workforce development, our work. In our CTE department, our CCL work that's going on to educate our, our legislators. On the work that actually is being done in our schools, and how our students are being prepared, and how that's gonna be taken away. With that decrease in funding or advance with additional funding, so, I mean, if each of our styles plays into it. So, anyways, I just wanted to throw that out there, but I really think that at least having something about the CCL work that's going on. For us to be able to share, I think would be, I think would be beneficial, you guys can tell me if you think otherwise, please.
Well, win friends and influence people with.
It takes us all with our different styles. So what I will do um is just um offer the opportunity for board members to give feedback. Looking at our current goals, and if there's something missing for them, they can indicate what's missing. I don't think anything's missing, and then we will, um. And I like, remember, one of the, one of my closing comments was going to be. Keep in mind that we can keep what we have, because uh we, the need is still there. In terms of our legislative priorities, so. But if, if board members, we'll give them the opportunity to bring to the next meet, the October meeting. Um, and even the November meeting, any additional uh priorities that we have. And then we'll work it from there, looking at whether it's the three Bs, I, I, that works for me. Any, but that's, that's the end of my part of this.
The only other thing I wanted to throw out there is, as far as the legislative visits, I really enjoyed having students and a teacher. In my sessions, and I know you did that as well, but um so that the legislators can get the full perspective from. You know, eh, something I say is not gonna come out as relevant as if it comes from a teacher or a student. So that full perspective in our, in our short meeting was, was really beneficial.
When you're, you mean when you're in Juno?
When in Juno, visiting with the legislators in Juno, yes.
Okay, I have a follow up.
Yeah.
I would love for whichever board members go with students in the future. To have a little bit more. But that, there needs to be, we're kind of throwing the students in during the week. And even if they are SAB members, you know, they're meeting once a month. I think that there needs to be a little bit more team briefing and, and relationship building and team building. Um, because it's a little bit of fly by the seat of pants, and I think even with.
Talking points?
Yeah, just, I don't know whether you need to have, you know, like a half day. On a Saturday with them ahead of term or something, I think it would help accelerate. And, and make that time in Juno more effective, that's not really on your agenda.
I like that very much.
When you guys were doing that with your teachers and your students, did you guys take the time to see there were those constituents of the. Legislature you were actually meeting with, because that has a lot of.
We did, if that was, we, we identified our legislative.
Yeah, we got it, yeah.
But it was, it's a lot of last minute.
Not those are working.
Yeah, he is a great resource.
Right, when we were scheduling this meeting, but just, just to. Um, you know.
But better collaboration ahead of time, I think is, is beneficial, I'd say.
And that, that breaks, I need to add, uh, in our, in January, uh, not January, but um. I don't think I put advocacy, I need to add that to our plan, I'll do that.
And then, sorry, coming back to this. It would be, it'd be helpful if there's an AASB fly-in and students go for them to report back to the board.
I don't think AASB is doing a fly-in this year, but I will check, I will check. We usually fly in, I think you flew in February last year.
Really, yeah.
So I will, I will confirm that.
Awesome.
Questions, comments on legislative luncheon?
Hey.
I'm gonna roll it back to Jake, if you can, patience.
Yeah.
Oh, MJ. See what happens when you wait till last?
Because that's the best. So uh we have transitioned from back to school, and our next uh messaging push is gonna be with attendance. Uh, we've got, uh, that'll start getting peppered out. Uh, this week, and the goal is not just for September, because September is uh attendance awareness month. We're gonna work on the entire school year and really help keep that message going. And helping students uh show up with good habits um in the planning stages and so on. We also have our uh partnership um with KTUU and KYES that uh member Wilson mentioned. Uh, on Tuesday night, that kicks off uh tomorrow in the evening, and then it gets a second run in the mornings, and then we'll repurpose that. Moving forward, but it's a really great opportunity for us this year to get into the classrooms more and show the good stuff that's coming out of the classrooms. Uh, specifically in the STEM area, since this is uh weather related. Uh, so we're gonna work on a hyper focus with that, and also get that planned out a lot more. So the teacher and the principal have a lot more buy-in to the opportunity to tell our story. And plan something really cool and interactive in person, as well as something that will go uh on air. And then uh the continuation in terms of monitoring enrollment, and then also messaging um the big six. Uh, we'll be working on some KPI, KPIS stuff for next week, as well as reading, and then of course, uh CCL. Uh, as you know, we've already started the school start times messaging, uh reinforcing the PLC Mondays. Uh, to help families uh with that friendly reminder. And then. And then the other ones, I guess, we'll. And I think on some, that's school start time, CCL, reading, KPIS. Middle school, middle school move, I'm missing the sixth one. Oh, big six. Oh, PLC is a separate, yeah, yeah, big six, and then it, um, and attendance. We're doing, so that's kind of in motion, and again, I think just uh as member, um. Jacob stated, please check out our social feeds, uh, we've got uh our new uh teammates on TESD of our pumping out. Um, good content, really focused in on telling the story of all our schools. Uh, and uh we've got a couple of schools that we uh popped in there uh last week, so. Feedback is welcome uh on this project as we navigate uh new waters, new territory.
That's lots of work. Thank you.
Yes, I was wondering, you overlooked, when I was driving here, I saw a sign getting uploaded at one of our schools for hiring.
Oh, yes, that's, yes.
So that was like, they were trucks in the parking lot.
Yeah, so uh, uh, we're supporting uh recruitment with their efforts for repair professionals. And student nutrition, uh, we also got some uh sto- uh stories coming out from TESD. On that as well, but um just to help support the need for repair professionals and student nutrition. Uh, we've got some signage that are going up on our campuses to help, uh, help with that, so.
Member, or sorry, President. I had a couple of things, and I can't remember. One of them may have been answered already, anyway, I'm gonna stand both. So the I am your workforce vignettes, um, I'd like to see more of those if we can. And I'm not, I'm not sure I understand the. The flow, or the how the, how we do it, but I'll leave it up to MJ. And then the other, I, I, in working with Jay Bear, with the military, I don't work with them, what I do is I meet with them. And we talk about different things, and a couple of things came up. We, we do have great information on our website about military families, but it's embedded in like zone exemptions. It's embedded in. It's, it's, it's. It doesn't stand alone, and so, uh, I, I've joined the um coalition of the military child, I think it's called. And some of, you know, when a military family comes into town and they're not familiar with the district. Now, we do have navigators here, which, which a lot of places don't have. They don't, we don't, we don't have a section on our website that is specific to military families. So I don't know if over the next, you know, I think we're fine for now, but as we plan forward, I'd like to see. Some. Improvements, not even improvements, just some uh additional focus on our military fa- on military family challenges. And zone exemption would be one of them, another uh would be, um. What was that other thing? There were a couple of things that, that we had to look for, they were there, they're on our website. But a military family new to the area would know that. In order to look, to get a zone exemption, you would have to look under chart, not charter school, yeah, charter schools or some other topic. Uh, to, to, to get that information, so. Anyway, that, that's all I have, but, but the information is there, but it is, it's, it's just, it's not a, it doesn't hit me and it would want, like, just jump out at you. So.
So, uh. I have a, a route reaching to uh my counterpart Jay Bear, we connected over the summer to share our back to school campaign messaging. So they were able to support us with that, and so I have an upcoming meeting with them. Uh, to discuss, and I'll bring this up on how we can make that uh, that better and get that information. They have also shared uh the families that move up from out of state and helping make that connection better and helping them stay more. More about what is going on at AST, how they can be part of the family.
Oh, great, appreciate it.
My station.
Um, I did fail to mention that AST connects, uh, ASD connect returns next Friday. So we'll have a section uh in there, um, and we're looking at revamping ASD connect to make it a little bit more engaging and connective. As well, so, uh, but next month, next week's will be all back to school and really helping. Uh, families move forward and look forward uh to the school year, and we're gonna be highlighting the big six and, and attendance as some other things. And, uh, for your legislative priorities, just so you guys know. Uh, I met with Heather Brakes uh this morning, and we discussed the legislative luncheon, and have a few ideas to help support you with your legislative outreach.
Great, and the vignettes?
Vignettes.
The I am your workforce.
Yeah, I want to sidebar. Yeah, yeah, I, but that's the stuff that we looked at, at the, um, at the board meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, and so we'll get that in motion for you for uh Friday, for next Friday.
Next Friday, okay, yeah. Okay. To just have, just to have it going in the beginning of our meeting, not to like focus on it or anything, but just to have it, have it going.
Yeah, I just need to get access, let's.
And I, I, yeah, and I, I've been missing Shauna, I'm sorry, um, that's my fault, because I, I think I was supposed to meet with her Tuesday. I changed it to Wednesday, and today's Thursday, and we still haven't met, so I'll, I'll do better. Thank you.
Nice, does anybody else have any comments, questions? Member Jacobs, nothing?
I think it's good.
Well. It is one forty eight.
Did we finish the date of, oh, we have the date.
We did, no.
And are you gonna select the menu for that?
Yeah, I'm gonna select that, yep.
I don't know if we're restricted on numbers for that, but I really would like to, given all the work we're doing with CCL. Would it be too big to invite some of those partners? To, for the legislative luncheon?
I can talk with Kirsten.
Would it be, I, I'm just thinking with all the work, you know, with our partners, our school business partners, our CCL partners. Um, if it makes sense to invite them to the, um, if it, if it makes sense, and or would be too much? If we invite them to.
The convening organizations, like United.
Yeah, yeah. To our legislative luncheon. Yeah, it's the top ones.
The top ones.
I would leave it up to Kirsten and her team who she invites, but.
And I'll check with Kern and his team on like how, what the capacity is.
Yeah, and then the other thing is, we don't, I don't know, uh, we haven't invited um our union people to these things. I think, um, if we can invite, if, if, at least invite them to come listen to our legislative priorities. Um, because it's, it's gonna take all of us to.
Each of you.
They have, they have somebody that's, yeah.
Directors.
So we, I mean, we don't have to decide today, but I would like to think about uh expanding the luncheon to include our partners and our bargaining. Uh, units. So we can talk about that more in the future.
Okay, awesome, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I still move.